Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll say.
First and second. Did you pose? Motion carries. Approval of the claims docket.
Motion to approve claims.
The second.
I'll second.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Do you oppose? Motion carries, thank you. I don't have anything new to to do any, I guess, actually. Maybe we could introduce our guests if rather than doing it at the end. We do have somebody that just found out this afternoon that you were in town now. And if you want to come forward and kind of introduce yourself, that way you don't have to stay for all the the rest of our meeting and then that will get you on your way.
Sure.
My name is Totor Marion and I'm a public affairs specialist with the Small Business.
Could you walk the podium too?
Okay.
Speaker here, thank you.
I'm Totor Marion, I'm a public affairs specialist with the Small Business Administration. We are in the area of Davies Counties and all of its contiguous counties, which includes Dubai. And we are here offering low interest federal loans to the community for the storms that happened June twenty eighth through July second. These loans are thirty year fixed, they're twelve months, no interest. And for homeowners, their interest rates as low as two point eight percent and for business owners as low as four point oh percent. Does anybody have any question?
You're set up in Jasper, right? The idea of permanent office or?
A hotel.
Okay. All right.
But we do have a disaster loan outreach center in Oghum, Illinois. And you can go there to sign up or you can go to our website, SBA.gov slash disaster.
Do you have any materials? We can share that on our website. They have your information here.
I can send you an email with the fact sheet and the press release.
That'd be great.
Then in Olden, Indiana?
Indiana.
Okay.
We saw.
I'm assuming that. But how do people find out about it? The website is the best way to get started or?
The website, I'll be at different events in the counties. I'm looking for events to attend, board meetings, chamber lunches, festivals, different things like that to get the word out, but I'm counting on you to help spread the word to your community.
So kind of quickly, what's the process of doing this? They follow up, they pictures of damage and stuff like that or how's this work?
They just go, they can go to our disaster loan outreach center and just apply. It's a very easy process. They just need a cell phone and an ID.
Interesting. Sounds so. A minimum amount of damage that a person or business would have had to incurred or minimum amount of the loan?
There is no minimum. If you're in the disaster areas, you qualify because the Davies County met the threshold to have us in that area. Okay?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have. You know, two super.
Well, with the gas part. You know, three services. New service this month. Four applications area to go. They did spend most of the month changing out some meters, need fifty two to new census meters. And crew members, they did on inspections of non-credible valves, they did find a small leak, a plastic valve, which is rare. So we had to dig it up, replace it. It was in the harbor yard, so they didn't have to disturb any of the roads. That was good. Then we did last week, we set two hundred and ten foot ductile iron poles. If I come down with their big digger truck, you can see in the pictures. Rasslin' things into the holes. Took all day, but we got them in. Uh, that's why the antennas so we can receive or reach from a gas meter over in Jasper area and out toward Lake. Lake Hemmer. Right now we're having trouble getting the signals back, so once we get antennas mounted on the poles, should tremendously help. But we got that done. Hole been laying in the yard for a while. Finally got coordinated with the MP to send their truck down with the big digger. Big auger. Actually grooming down thirteen feet to set them.
Wow.
Three foot in diameter, it's all a bit. Well, no, I'm not correct one.
My bad. Is that still a pole?
That's a line.
It's nothing way about.
Eight, little eight thousand pounds.
You get stood up high like you had a bed. Yeah, like moves a lot.
Yeah. Hope nothing breaks. But we did get her set, but she's already for antennas be mounted and we can get them in from the company. Any questions on the gas? Moving on to electric. Set a couple new poles on Seven Street for new duplexes under construction. I think they got two of them pretty well up, just got a whole friend up, great. We did set two secondary pole behind some house on Sunset that were rotten. Uh, we had, couldn't get a truck in there, so we had to take excavator in with poles. There's like thirty five foot poles, so it wasn't too bad. Been broke for a while, we decided to wait till the ground got firm enough to get in there with many without tearing it around up. So that's completed. And they've been working on South Cherry. Uh, actually it branched up today. We converted that little section from overhead to underground, just across the street, across the road. A lot of big trees right there usually cause a lot of problems, usually when the limb comes out, usually not sort it out. Takes a while down, takes a while to get it all back up and going. We did talk to the homeowner, they want to keep trees on their property. Uh, which I can understand, it kind of shades them from the ball field lights, kind of a important trees to him, so we decided to go underground across the road. But we didn't get that completed. So it should reduce some outages hopefully in the future. And continued to change out some electric meters. We're now over a thousand meters changed out. We have like thirty eight hundred total in our system. Left them going pretty good. And I do have quotes for transformers, pad and not transformers for residential. Permission last meeting to quotes, and I got three quotes. The cheapest quote, twenty four thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars per ten transformers.
That per each? That's for each?
No, that's total.
Okay.
Let's see, twenty five KVA and fifteen KVA residential. Had mouse.
A better twenty four prices.
Yeah.
That looks better.
Now the Solomon is re manufactured transformer. Set a brand new, re manufactured, they probably use the same can. They put new windings, new insulation, new oil in it. Test every, three year warranty.
Are they compared to a new one for his warranty?
Warranty, new ones are one year.
Auctions.
As evening. That's why I ask, sometimes I deal with this stuff on home parts, sometimes new doesn't make it any better.
The brand new one from like Herman's would be like forty four thousand piece.
Have we bought any from Sun that before?
Yeah.
We had.
Yeah.
You think they last just as well as the?
Yeah, basically, it's all we've got soon. Can or the.
It's what we thought last fall was.
Pardon?
That's what we thought last time.
Yeah, we was bought before, long time ago.
These are small enough and easy enough to get to if it's gonna be, it's not a big problem, some, one of them won't feel bad, you can get to it pretty easy.
Yeah.
This has had an apple.
Yeah.
It's on the ground, it's.
Residential.
Yeah.
You figure out a little mini or little back though. Swap it out.
Yeah.
Believe times short two, three, four weeks.
We need permission, need a motion purchase and mid mouth transformers from Slavosol. I'll make it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you oppose? Motion carries.
Any questions on that?
Those poles come down or will they just be shortened up a lot of the telephone cable on that side of the cherry?
So we got with the communication companies. Well, we moved them over to our new poles.
Oh, we able to do that?
Yeah, see this.
Across the street?
Yeah, they were a new one. I think there's one communication company gonna let it, let it up across where it is now. When it comes down, turn it down. Everybody's still being electric, but they don't have communication line.
I didn't know if those were, I can't remember if those were iron poles or wood poles or you could shorten them up or whatever you had to do.
Real quick, can you give a brief description of what happened to the power in the city the other day?
Friday?
Yeah.
Uh, Center Point.
Thanks.
They had a switching problem. I was called about three o'clock from Center Point, see they're from the substation south of Jasper to our substation. You know, big poles headed east of town. And we're all wooden, they're gonna replace them with steel poles. Right now they're working in the bottoms. Out, yeah, turn it real kink or out east there. They're switching by our substation. They got motor operated air brake here, it wasn't working properly, so they had to manually open the switch. So they opened it too slow or drew an arc. And finally went phase to phase and knocked the circuit out, knocked the city offline. So time to reset everything, we were out a couple minutes, but it was all Center Point.
Yeah. Yeah, they're doing quite the, quite the upgrade through the bottom though there, if you can see on this.
We replaced some steel poles all the way to our substation. So they just have switching problem. Knocked it out for a couple minutes until I got it then reset, turning back in.
If it wasn't us.
Thank you. What are some, Jerry must.
Good afternoon. Uh, we'll jump into distribution here. Service line for OFS plant one, sure you guys are probably hearing, tired of hearing about this one. It's been about a three month project. We've had a lot of, a lot of city utilities out there. Um, but with that, there was a lot of private utilities, our best has a lot of fiber out there in the ground. Um, as well as private electric and OSF, OFS as well. Um, so kind of dragged that project out a whole lot longer than what we wanted. Uh, but we did get with Trinsons Innovations, we finally got all the utilities located, they were able to come in, we board that new service line in, got that whole new service done for OFS plant one there. And then from there, with the weather, we finally got some ground dried out, so we, uh, we have quite a few right of ways throughout town, uh, heading to our South Water Tower, West Street. Um, out County Road six sixty and seven hundred towards Verden, towards our Potoka pit out there that we hope by our wholesale pit. Uh, and with all these storms that we've had, we've had a ton of trees go down those right of ways. We do our best to keep those right of ways clear, just in case we do have issues out there, where we can get to and we're not working on trees before we get there. Um, so we did spend a little over a week cutting trees up out of those right of ways and getting moved and how we can keep them mowed. Um, that's Rich Chan, our part time employee. Uh, kind of surprising, but he most fifty four acres a week. That's just around the lake there and then all the right of ways that we have spread out from town, so. And he most, he most every right away weekly, just so we do have good access to all of our infrastructure.
From somebody that number they didn't believe.
Yeah, it's, it is a lot. We, we sat there and we figured it out just to, just to see how much it was a few years back and it's it's definitely a lot more than what a person would think that we have out there, just due to the fact of all the right of ways that we do have throughout the city. And so from there, um, we got to OFS. We went out there and located a few utilities for their new, I don't know if it's a warehouse or probably there, the four hundred and nineteenth street where, um, they're gonna have to have their fire service vault moved. So trying to work with them and finding a good spot to put that fire vault to not interfere with one of their buildings or their parking lot that they're putting in, we did spend some time out there with our hydro excavator. Um, along with the contractor that they hired to do that work. And then, uh, we had, uh, during our spring flushing this year, we did find, we flush South Ridge Fire Hydrants when we do hours, just to keep them on a routine maintenance schedule. Make sure they work, we do test those as far as their gallon per minute, residual pressures for the fire department, so they know what to expect when they get out there to be able to pull off those fire hydrants if need be. With that, we, we've always in the past kind of helped them with anything going on up there, so we did a system with, uh, with that replacement there. And then, uh, we did, uh, find an abandoned meter pit at Seventh and Dave Urin where the, where Rudy Kirstens purchased that property and is putting up those duplexes. Um, it's buried underground thankfully, it didn't, uh, nobody caught it with a piece of equipment, so we were able to remove it uh, without making a mess. And then, um, we, uh, we did do some work to our boat dock. We went a long time without having boat dock out there and we had a lot of people, um, requesting boat dock being put in out there. And we were able to put that in, uh, roughly two and a half years ago. Um, unfortunately, we did catch it on camera, but it was too dark to be able to see faces or license plates. Uh, we had some, uh, some uh, people come out there and do some vandalism to that boat dock and rip the railing off of it, the lake. So we were finally able to fish that, that, uh, that railing out and with the help of uh, John's, yeah, Ryan Hall with the gas department, he was able to come out and weld that aluminum back together for us and we've got that installed and back in place for our fishing. Yes, it is.
He's very sad.
It is.
Something nice, my gosh.
Yes, it is. But from there, we, uh, we jumped into a chainsaw safety seminar at the street department. Um, for our, our employees there, it's great for them, we're constantly using chainsaws, so whether they're new employees that haven't been through it all or old employees that, uh, sometimes we fall in bad habits, it's nice to have that kind of training for them to be able to have that little refresher to maybe remember to put those chaps on next time we grab a chainsaw, keep yourself safe. There we, uh, every year we kind of a joint effort with the street department, we go out and pick up straw bales out of the field, so this year we went out and picked up several hundred straw bales and we store those down at the street department, we use those for all of our yard repairs. So unfortunately, the only time we do straw is the hottest months of the year. It's, it's always a joy. Uh, and then, uh, we did do a lot of dirt work and seeding, uh, since we've had a lot of this rain, a lot of our uh, big areas have settled out, so we're able to get there and take care of a lot of that. And then, uh, with that OFS plant one service line, we did have to cut a section of the parking lot out at OFS plant eighteen to expose the water main there, took that service up, so we did, uh, we went out there and worked with the street department to get that put in as well. And then, um, we spent some time in our first street bin lot. We, uh, use that location to dump our hydro excavator and the stuff that comes out, hydro excavator is very wet. Um, it's, I mean, it's a liquid when it comes out of there. Um, it's not easy to get in and out of Ralph Lagners with that where we normally dump our dirt, so we have a, uh, secluded area there, we dump it in, we let it dry and we go down there and load up the haul up to Ralph's. And then, uh, we also had a water symposium, utility supply company, it's the last one for our fiscal year for our C, for our licenses. So we did send everybody there to get their last, uh, last few CDs that they needed for the the, uh, year to be able to continue to obtain their license. Uh, from there, we go to filter plant, um, filter plant is running as it should minus our two filters that you guys are aware of, uh, we did we did have a little change in our filter plant, uh, as you all know, this is first, I've been here since, but Jase Merkel has stepped into the superintendent position of parks. Uh, we wish him well, very excited for him because we know his, uh, passion for the park. And with that, we have put, um, Aaron Beaker in his place out there at the water filtration plant. Um, he's worked along Jase, probably more than anyone that's out there. Um, he is overqualified for the position as far as certifications and credentials and, uh, with me and Jay setting down, we felt he was the best one for the job. And he's been out there for, uh, going on a month now and he's doing great with it. Uh, he's really enjoying it and, and doing great things. So, um, other than that, our meter system, we're still waiting on that last shipment, I did, uh, speak with him again, same thing, we're looking at him yet this month, so hopefully by the, uh, end of this fall, before it gets super cold, we'll, uh, we'll have our meter program wrapped up with the, uh, census meter system. Anybody had any questions with any of that?
Of the accuracy of that meter system, good.
The, as far as the accuracy goes, yeah, um, so those meters, we do go out, we have a we have a certified meter for our smaller diameter meters, um, it's set up in a portable box. We go out and pick random meters, we hook that meter up to the homeowner's outside water spigot. We run water through the water spigot and we can compare numbers to make sure we're staying within our, uh, well, to make sure they are hundred percent accurate.
And paying for once or refusing.
Yes, very much so. Uh, with our large diameter meters, we do have a, uh, company come in. Um, we use group industries that come out and certify our meters as well at the water filtration plant. Uh, we have to have ours done yearly for identity purposes. Um, but any of our large diameter meters at our industries that are, uh, extremely war, large water user, users. Um, we do have them also certify those meters as well to make sure that we are not missing any, uh, potential revenue there from water loss.
Yeah.
Other than that, I did include a packet here from Commonwealth. Um, I didn't, we, we went over this, it's the, the same, uh, scope of plan that, uh, John Witzel was here and explained to you guys a few months back. We finally had it all put together with the advertisement for bids. There, um, there is a correction on here, uh, you did have on there, um, a projected bid opening on Tuesday, August twenty sixth at five thirty PM. Uh, we don't want to do that on a, a night of a meeting, we don't want to drag that up for you guys any longer than we have to. And, um, I believe there's a, a stipulation with that of being able to approve uh, with us being able to approve that if we would open those at that meeting. Um, so with that, I'm, I'm just bringing you this packet to, uh, prove the plans and spec sheet and, uh, give us permission to go ahead and advertise this for contract for bid. We, uh, there are a few things on here with this, we would have to put it out to the Herald twice before the, uh, before the bid date, we do, um, there's multiple places here with Commonwealth Engineering that, um, contractors are able to pick up bid documents. And then, um, we would also, uh, be having a pretty big conference Thursday, August seventh at ten AM at the water treatment plant. That way the contractor is able to actually come out there and physically see what you're up against. It's, uh, as far as doing the work, it's for a lot of these companies that will bid this, it's, uh, normal, normal everyday stuff for them. Unfortunately, with our plant staying in service, it's, uh, it really puts a strain on the way they're gonna be able to move this stuff in and out of the plant due to the fact that the dust control and everything else is gonna have to be going on while we keep the plant in service, so. Instead, other, other than that, that date change there, and I'm not sure if, are we able to do that Tuesday, the twenty sixth at ten AM and still be able to accept that bid that evening?
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, we, we have to have a big committee, but also Commonwealth will have to review the bid completeness. So really, uh, the question goes back, could we have a conversation with Commonwealth, are they good with the ten AM? It's been seven hours.
And I did.
To review this.
I did speak with John about that today and he did say that's fine. Um, he did say we could also move it back to Monday, but he said Mondays are Mondays. And, uh, he would, uh, he would like to keep it, if we could do it ten AM on Tuesday, that would give them plenty of time to be able to to do what they need to do with the bids to bring them to council meeting, uh, for approval that evening.
Normally we have Tom, the mayor superintendent of state committee. We'll make that motion.
Make that. I'll say.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I, motion carries, you good with that date and time, Tom?
And I'll get you that dated.
We approve it.
Yeah.
We want to give you that dated, um, advertisement for the Herald stuff with that time change of ten AM. Uh, John told me he'd have it back this, in the morning. He was just out of the office for the rest of the day today.
And they need chaos to approve the project specifications and authorize the bidding by advertising, bid advertisement.
I'll make a motion to prove the specification and allow advertisement for bids.
I'll say it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you oppose? Motion carries.
I wouldn't have to follow half.
Made it pretty simple on his list there.
Not fair.
Rebuilding, I like charts like that, makes it simpler.
He, he does, uh, he does very well.
No attorney talk in there.
Exactly.
And I appreciate it. I think up these days, that might be betting on this.
I, it's, it's truly hard to tell, it's, uh, it's really hit this with all the, there's a lot of infrastructure work going on with wastewater facilities, water facilities in the area. Um, you guys have seen that with the wastewater project. Uh, where there's, and it's, it's a very small scope of companies that do do this work. Uh, with that Commonwealth does, they do use a portal, uh, they do upload this to, it automatically pushes this out to contractors that they're aware of that do do this line of work. So it will be pushed, pushed out to multiple contractors as well as being able to see it in the Herald. Um, so I'm, I'm hoping it's, uh, it's a very competitive process and.
I doubt these contractors are allowing that, just on, on any newspaper to get their word.
Right, yes, yeah.
I mean, that's.
That's for sure.
I don't, I mean, but I do think, I do think that the engineering companies have lots, they spend a lot of time contracting, contacting and, and having discussions with these people so they can, these other, so they can, they want to, they want to get these things bid, you know, they want to get lots of bids, so.
Yeah.
Good for that. Like to get that behind us.
Yeah, me too. Yeah, more than ready, we're, we're still on schedule and with this continues to keep us on schedule, so that's that's a big thing for us is to be able to have this construction going on during the late fall, winter, in the spring and be done by our high demand days when the summer rolls around. So it's, uh, very important for us to continue to stay on, on timeline and get this project wrapped up, so I appreciate you guys' cooperation and approval.
That's been several months you've been working on, I so appreciate your efforts on that too.
You didn't, you didn't know you took this job, you gotta be instruction, uh, construction superintendent.
Well, a lot, a lot of things I didn't know. Congratulations. That's, that's exactly right. Yep, all right, thank you guys.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Anything from city attorney Phil Snyder?
Phil, once we received the bid, then the last night, my life, finding us another. I'll be revisiting that when we get the bid. That's all I need.
Thank you to the electric department. Uh, anything from frustration, Tom Dippen?
Uh, only for keeping that door, right?
You need to be thinking about when you go to Congress.
I think we did it all on Monday last year, then.
We did. I'd like to discuss maybe some of the scheduling, I think we've made it organized better than what we'd had last year. Allow the three departments, we had a lot of questions, more time. Okay, and if they don't use their time, then Tom can fill in, cause he had a lot of. Building knowledge.
Yeah, I mean, uh some of them are very straightforward and others, there's a lot of.
Yeah.
There's a lot of discussions.
We backed up the time slots a lot because we didn't allow enough time. So I think. My opinion, allow the park and police and street at least an hour.
Yeah, I agree. And we base, get those out, cause if I remember right, finished first half day very quickly. That actually went somewhere to lunch and. Ran it a little over in the afternoon. Okay, look at that. Do the split up some of those. My first month, I didn't know. Alright, any uh, any other items, council items, citizen items?
Uh I saw a large claim, and I know it's probably. Based on the progression of the senior system that made a large payment. I assume we're progressing pretty well.
Yeah, and those were two months, so I believe that between six and five and six. To leave is the two. So there were two there together, uh May and June, Chippikity July, so that they're, right now, uh. They were originally scheduled uh by contract to be completed by the end of November, they're projecting right now, we had an update last Thursday, that it could be the first week. Uh of October, for October. They did start a month early and they're running ahead, but we do have. Uh decking material, I think we're waiting on everything else. They have to pick out the. Anyway, there's a, there's a lead time on the decking material, but other than that, uh everything else seems. Everything's there, the windows are there, the inability, the doors are in the building, siding has arrived. The wall is available. Uh right now, they have to replace exterior siding on that. And when they hit, once they get that done, then they'll rub with the drywall. By the way, until they get to the siding replacements, case there's stud damage on exterior walls. They put everything up, so they'll do that, they'll run electrical. Uh drains are already open. They're driving. Dude. So. Running, running ahead of this getting.
Nothing else, I'll make motion to adjourn.
I'll second. We had a first and a second on the German, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Most carriers?